Okay. I'll call the June 27 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We have their roll call, please.
Chair DeBolt.
Here.
Vice Chair Riley, absent. Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner Rose.
Here.
Commissioner Lowe.
Here.
And Commissioner Self-Facanic, absent.
Okay, can we stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, I'll open the meeting for oral communications. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to address the commission on any item that's within the subject matter of the commission, we'll have you step up and sign in and...
Okay, I signed in. Hello.
Hi.
My name is Debbie Sendejas. And what I'm here about today is I own property here in Los Almeitos. And I'm here to voice my opinion on the provision that has been made about the parking, the new parking law, as far as one bedroom needing 2.17. Or even if I were to add a room into one of my properties, my mother's house, that I would have to put, just for one bedroom, 2.17 parking for a spot. I think this was something that is just kind of hastily made. I have a large property of 1,600 square feet, and the thought that if I were to decide if I wanted to put apartments, I would, if I wanted to put eight to nine, I would have to put 40 spots for parking. I'm just not happy with that. I've been at, my parents, you know, lived here for years, and I've been an owner since my parents passed away. And I just, you know, feel that the city needs to really take a look at this, or the council people, on this decision that has been made, and how it can affect people that currently own. I just feel it affects this certain area that's right here off of Chestnut Street, Walnut Street, and Oak Street, definitely. I know a lot of the people that live there, and I'm voicing my opinion that I'm not happy with this, and just feel it's just not reasonable. And today, I don't want to walk away with just my saying this, I want to know what goes from here. That's my feeling right now, is as an owner, taxpayer. My parents worked very hard to have that property. I work hard on it as well.
Okay. As far as the response, are we allowed, we can't really...
No. It's not on the agenda.
All right. Okay.
But...
Parking is on the...
Parking, but this is...
This is already passed.
This was something that was passed...
It's already passed.
Yeah, several months ago. So this is something that, I don't know if you'd like staff to address it with her later, or get her information and contact her after, or what your procedure is for that.
And it's just not myself that is here, there's a gentleman here that's a property owner as well.
He can come up.
Richard Alvarado.
Okay, all right. Okay, I guess what the city attorney is saying is that we can't engage in a conversation on an item that's not on the agenda. Okay, anything, and because this, the parking changes have already been enacted, and are already in effect, I think, at least three months ago?
Yes.
Okay. And what we're discussing tonight with relating to parking has to do with some of the development standards for sizes of parking spaces and that type of a thing. So that's what's on our agenda tonight. So to... Basically, that's about it. So to address what's already happened, we can't, we can't discuss, but probably if you'd want to get with the staff, they could maybe give you some more insight, and maybe give you some better numbers with respect to the parking requirement, that type of a thing, you know, exactly how the math works out, so that, like, if you were to add on and stuff like that.
I kind of did go over that already, I've looked into that.
Oh, did you? All right, okay.
I already did, and I'm not happy with it. That's why I'm here.
All right, okay.
And I just felt it was a hastily decision to be made with, you know, I don't know, if I was a property owner, I had no right, at this point, to know that. That's, that's my feeling right now.
Okay.
I'm sure Richard feels the same way.
Wanted to discuss in the future, what would they do?
If, a member of the public?
Yeah. I mean, if they wanted them to discuss it, what would they do?
Sure, so there's nothing that prevents you from contacting the members of the Planning Commission or the City Council directly? I believe their email address is available, or we can find out...
True.
But there's nothing, there's nothing that prevents you from either emailing or submitting a letter to the city to state your point of view to them directly, or asking to have a meeting with any, either the council, who also passed that after the Planning Commission, or the Planning Commission members, or any member of staff?
Okay, so then, I just want to clarify, so then, and then what would I do with this meeting with the council then, or everybody, or send emails? Then what? Where do I go?
So just to clarify, you can't meet with them all as a body, other than this opportunity for public comment? But you basically can state your concerns, and then ask that they do something to change it, but they already, the Planning Commission passed this change several months ago, and the council also already adopted it, so since it's already taken effect, that is your recourse, just like any other topic.
So then, nobody wants, if I were still to do this, it can't be addressed, or changed, or what happens?
It can, yeah, if a council member or planning commissioners wanted to discuss it again and potentially change it, then any city ordinance can be changed, as long as it continues to qualify with the law. So change can be made if they're amenable, the officials are amenable to making that change.
If you have enough, and what would that mean? Like, you would have enough owners that would come up and speak to you, to them about that?
That's for them to determine, but just like anything, you'd have to have a majority of the body pass a change.
Right, right. Okay, so then, from here forward, then, I need to just get everybody's staff information then, right now, or?
So, not right now?
On Monday? Okay, okay, thank you.
Or, let's see, what is today? Yeah, or tomorrow, yeah.
And the reason they can't discuss it here tonight is because an item has to be put on the council agenda.
Correct, correct.
And give a notice for the public to, anybody else to come and speak on the matter. So you can express your comments here tonight, we can listen to them.
Right.
I'll be happy to give you my card, I'm the interim Development Services Director, we can meet.
Right.
And discuss your concerns.
Okay.
And we can talk about some possible alternatives that you can pursue.
Okay.
To seek any changes that you'd like to, that you'd like to see.
Thank you, I appreciate it. If you could get a card, it'd be great.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to come up and address the commission? Okay, okay. At this time, I'll close the oral communication, and we'll move on to approval of the minutes for the meeting of May 23.
On them, I have a question on oral communication. You've got Chair Andrade, those oral communication, is that an error? I don't know. Sorry, for Chair Andrade, under oral communication?
That's not right.
So...
Oh, yes.
You were there, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I think a chair...
Yeah, no, I'm not even the vice chair, so...
I thought maybe we did something with him suddenly.
That was a good catch, I didn't see that.
Other than that, I would make a motion with the correction to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, minutes passed. Okay. All right, got abstention there. Okay, we have no discussion, no consent calendar items. Next item is item eight, a zoning ordinance amendment. We have a staff report, please. Would you like to discuss that one?
Oh, sure. So, after several months of meeting together as the commission, and discussing the multifamily residential zoning parking requirements and standards, you directed me to prepare the redline changes into a resolution recommending the council adoption ordinance, modifying the parking standards as set forth in this item. So with that, if you have any questions or further modifications, then I am available to answer them and/or note them for additional changes.
Okay. Does anybody have, let's see, what's next on our... Okay, at this point, I'll, do we have any questions of staff regarding this item? Okay, is there, is this a public hearing, so I can open it to the public?
Yes.
Anybody wants to come and speak to this issue, which has to do with the off-street planning, off-street parking loading, and off-street parking? Okay, seeing nobody wanting to address it, I'll close the hearing to the public. I'll, we'll open it back up later on, if you have...
I was going to say, well, this is kind of like my same thing, am I right? This is what I'm here for.
Well, yes, I would say, I would say, you might want to listen to the, we're going to go through this.
Okay.
If you have a staff report there, it'll have the items, and, and you'll see what we're discussing, and we're kind of flexible here, we can open it back to the public. If you want to comment again, you know, we can do it that way, just to...
At what point can I comment again? It's going to be...
Well, when we, okay, well, once we get done, we'll, I'll give you a little latitude here, is that okay?
Yes, as long as the comment is related to the...
Really, it has to be related to what we're talking about, so... Okay, so anyway, so, any other, any comments on the changes that we're proposing?
I didn't, no, I didn't have anything. I mean, I was looking at the changes that were made, and it seemed that she was, actually, I was going to say, nice job, because I didn't, yeah, I didn't see anything that needed to be readjusted.
I have just a couple, we're talking about residential parking and storage standards, and for the R2 and the R3, what we tried to do, and we gave the attorney instructions, and she did it, and now seeing it, I'm, to me, there's a little bit of confusion here when I read it. I'm trying to get real precise on this. If we look at, on page, on the attachment one, under 060 residential parking standards, item two, and this will also, will apply to item three, or point three. R2 limited family zone districts, okay, in the R2 limited family zoning district, two of the required parking spaces for condominiums, and one of the required parking spaces for all other dwelling units shall be located in a fully enclosed garage space equipped with a functional automatic garage door opener. I know we wanted to include condominiums into this section, even though we address it again. To me, that reads, and I found it to be a bit cumbersome. I would like to see, in, now having seen it this way, that maybe if we break out condominiums as like, we have an item A, and then you have, you have one, two, and three, and then item B goes vehicle and recreational items. Maybe if we make, we add a, we add a, an area called residential condominiums, so that the parking is clear for residential condominiums. And then just basically have that fragment of the sentence that relates to the condominiums fall under its own little heading there, so that it's, it's clear that...
Would you...
Maybe make an item either...
Item R2 limited family in, in districts, and then bullet point, go A.
Well, R2, yeah, see, the condominiums all fall under the multifamily districts, either R2 or R3.
Yeah, so break it out into A, B, C.
So I was thinking if we added a bullet point, it could be C, it can be, we can make B, residential condominiums, because all we're talking about is parking and storage. And just say, under residential condominiums, two enclosed spaces for each unit, you know, two enclosed spaces for each unit. We have in, and that would be one bullet point, and then we don't address guest parking at all. And then maybe have a second point under that that says guest parking, and then refer it to the, do we have a spot somewhere for guest parking?
Yes, which is what we modified previously.
Right, I know, that's going to be in a, on a, on a chart somewhere. And then maybe just guest parking, see tables so-and-so. So that if somebody's reading this, you know, and they're going to build apartments, or they're going to build condominiums, you know, this was a confusion we had with the other project, the guys looking at this, saying, oh, the condominiums all, you know, we got to apply this, but then we go farther back, we got into the, the other part called residential condominiums, and we say in the CCNRs, it has to be provisioned for, you know, for two spaces, you know, or two enclosed. So I'm just, maybe...
Just trying to break it out.
Yeah, in this area here, having to do with parking, we, because condominiums are different than the apartments, than the typical multifamily R2, R3, we have just another heading called residential condominiums, and then just put whatever the requirement is, which is two enclosed spaces for each unit, with a fully operational garage door, you know, with a...
So then you would have to have, I guess, a second number with, somewhere?
Either, well, either, either, no, I think, it wouldn't be a separate number, we have A.
No, you have to handle the other dwelling units.
Well, no, the other dwelling units would just remain in the R1.
Well, I think it would be cleaner, if you want to go that way, then it'd be cleaner to put it all as like, a two subsection, small A, and B.
Yeah, however you want to do that, but I think, rather than try to incorporate into one long sentence, that's, that's where I'm, we have one long sentence that is trying to address both apartments, let's just say, and condominiums. I think it would just be easier to, for anybody reading this, you know, for whatever they're going to be building, to see what they have to comply with.
So...
I'm just trying to make it, sorry, clear.
Tom, can, do you, I don't know off the top of my head, except I can't remember from the chart, but does the parking standards chart that we modified before with like, the number of bedrooms and things, does that also specify the number of covered parking, or is that just in this section?
That's just in this section, yeah.
So that was my, that's that one, and then, I think that's it, actually. Let me just make sure. I think we're okay on that. Okay, then on page seven of 13, going farther back under landscaping, we eliminated this whole section, B, and this has to do with the, this has to do with the residential areas.
Yes.
Are we then not requiring any type of landscaping in the, in the parking area for residential development?
My...
Is that somewhere else?
I believe that landscaping requirements are somewhere else, I don't know if specific to parking lot areas, but...
Yeah, there are, there are in the commercial section.
I know, but that, that's what we were trying to get away from.
Yeah, right, exactly, just get it over in landscaping, landscaping and landscaping and parking and parking, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I thought...
So I think when you discussed this before, the problems that we were running into with the sections that we removed, when we separated out residential, residential exterior open space parking from commercial, is that many of these were not appropriate...
Right.
...or residential.
Right. But, right, like the, the curbing and all that. So we've done that, but what about landscaping? I guess that's the question.
I think it's, it's been taken out.
But, so they can have like a, if it's a big apartment building, you can just have a big slab of cement and no landscaping?
No, I think with, the development standards would establish landscaping requirements, because you have to have certain percentages of the landscaping that's approved by the standards, and then ultimately whatever they submit, approved by the Planning Commission.
So where would that be?
Uh, that's not in parking, it's in the...
Was there, okay, so do we have another section called landscaping then?
Let me, like, Tom, in development standards, there are certain landscaping requirements for residential...
Seventeen...
But it's not the commercial.
It's, yeah, it's not in...
No, it's different.
We're taking it out of there, apparently.
Yeah, that, that's...
Anti-System 1720.
Oh, yeah.
1720.
But it was in that B, on section...
Right, no, I'm, I'm with you on that, I just want to make sure that we didn't eliminate it.
Right.
No.
Altogether.
Oh, right.
I mean, we got it somewhere else that says when you're...
Now, 1720 030, it talks about the minimum 15%, but it says parking lot landscaping shall not be counted towards meeting this requirement, which to me would discourage people, like, why would I put anything in the parking lot if it's not going to count towards my...
Right, so are we going to require any landscaping in the park, in the parking area? I'm kind of ambivalent on that a little bit, but...
I'm not, I mean...
But on the other hand...
I think it's a little tricky, really.
Yeah.
I mean, we have parking issues already, so now if you're going to take up space
No, I hear you.
For landscaping, that becomes more difficult.
Right, and I'm, I just want to make sure we're all on, we under...
I think I'm, I mean, for me, I'm, I'm good with it, the way it stands of pulling it out of and leaving what we have.
All right.
Because I just think that just opens up a whole nother issue of potential...
Parking will be tight enough.
Potential difficulty, yeah, yeah, exactly.
All right.
This is a place for landscape, in my opinion. Parking is parking. I get if it's a commercial area, you want some low landscape, and they have...
That's pretty heavy anyway, you're going to have to put it some...
I get that for, for land, I mean, for commercial, but for residential, it's a little more tricky, I think, to do.
Okay, well, that was a question. How about you, Mary Ann, are you satisfied with this so far?
That's okay. I had a question on residential condominium conversion parking standards, where we're not requiring any additional parking if they convert it. They can't add on to that, right? It's just like, the standalone apartment building's now becoming condos, and that parking's fine.
Yes.
Okay.
That was so we could promote people turning apartments into condos.
1726 065.
And if you were, if you were to be, we have in our code already, if you're going to be adding us more than, is it 10% to the, to the footprint of the building, then, then they have to meet the current standards.
Yeah, so I think it depends on what, what you're adding, the purpose of what you're adding for, because...
Yeah, it would have to be...
There are different requirements for accessory dwelling units now than just for an expansion.
Right, well, if, let's just call it an expansion. Okay, I just want to be clear on that.
Additions to structure, in additions to structures that are greater than 25%, you have to bring it up.
Okay, so, so, so if you're going to add on to existing property, this might kind of go to what you were talking about, if you're going to add more than 25% of the existing square footage, then, then you've got to meet the current standards.
Right.
Right, all right, okay.
And I did notice the top of page eight, there's just a small typo, it says 24-inch overhand instead of overhang.
Is that common, if I may ask? Because when we get into the size of, of parking stalls, does that mean that a stall that should be 19 feet in length can be 17 feet, and they can count that extra two feet of overhang? That's, that is in some zoning codes up, up county? Yeah. All right, and, and the...
It's more of a curb stop, I mean... Yeah, I mean, your, your vehicle's still going to go over that, it's just a tire.
But is it going to be, is it ever two feet?
I don't think from the front tire.
From your front tire to the, to the front of your car?
Maybe through the Lincoln.
Yeah.
That seems really long, now that you say it.
Well, I mean, it just depends on the car, I mean, if you have an SUV, which, there are quite a few of them out there, that's going to be...
You think you could approach that?
Yeah.
Actually, there's some trucks that are long.
You're, you're in that realm, I, I mean...
Yeah, okay.
If you make it any shorter than that, you run the risk of somebody, of it not actually doing its job. So if there's something in front of it, and you're closer to it now...
Right, right, all right.
You run the risk of that vehicle, of it, of that curb stop not doing what it's intended to do.
All right.
But I think Art was questioning, do we want the parking, the parking space then is only 17 feet?
It's only 17 feet.
Because you're counting the two of the planner.
I don't think they, right, but I was saying, I don't think they extend it, because I think your car overhangs it, so...
Yeah.
I don't...
I think that's what we, I mean, that's something that, we ran into that on the, I think on the, we ran into it on the, on the one we just approved.
Olson.
Olson, okay, there was three or four spaces that were not 19 feet in depth, and they were counting...
As a space.
The projection of two feet over...
Okay.
To meet that requirement, they just couldn't squeeze it all in. Now, they ultimately reconfigured it...
Right.
Okay, on, for other issues, but it just, uh...
That's a good question.
Is that something, is that something we want to address, that we, that a space is 19, it is 19 feet, and do we not allow a projection of 24-inch? Where there's a landscape planner, exists a 24-inch overhang is permitted in front of the parking space, and up to 24 inches, which, that may be included in the required measurements for the, it says for parking space dimension. If that's standard, I don't, I don't have...
I feel like it's...
Is that kind of a, I mean, from your experience in... Well, I can speak to the previous city I was at. Right. It did allow for an overhang. All right, okay.
How, in the same, 24-inch, in the same space? Yeah, I think, I think it's...
All right, it's good.
I think it's good.
That's all I have. Anybody else have any? Okay. At this point, I'll open it to the public if anybody wants to comment on what we just commented on regarding dimensions and et cetera.
Well, I guess, because I would still fall into that, you know, about, if you say over 25% building, then the parking spot, and you guys are just, right now, just talking about the condo, right?
Yeah, condo, well, this is development standards that will affect all, all multifamily development.
Well, I'm still voicing my same opinion.
All right, okay, I just wanted to...
No, thank you for letting me, yeah, no, because I still want to get up every time and say this.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to say it again.
Okay.
You know? Yeah, and then like you're saying about the length, that's what you're talking about, the length that the, that's really important, too.
Right, right.
Because cars are, you know, depending on the car, so...
Okay, great.
I'm voicing it again, and I'm not, you know, a lot of parking for...
Okay, real good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll close at the, the public portion, I'll bring it back to the commission. Would somebody like, are you ready for a motion on this, subject to the, the changes, or do you want to bring it back again, or?
No, I think that we're not changing anything substantive, so I can make that breakdown, and then we'll pass it with the, that direction.
Okay, great. Somebody like to make that motion?
Yeah, I will make a motion to, I guess, accept zoning ordinance, ZOA 18-02, with the changes, proposed changes.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Okay. Next item is item nine, oh, eight, B.
So this next item is the continuation of the discussion about parking, if you want to keep discussing other areas of the code that we haven't already, of the parking code. Like, you were talking about maybe R1, there was, you had some questions about R1, maybe? No.
Refresh my memory, my fleeting memory.
That was pretty much...
That was pretty much, that was...
That must have been really important.
I think that was your comment, yeah. Yeah, so if there's anything else in, in the code that you'd like to continue to discuss in that, that we have... that we haven't gotten to yet, which basically is everything.
I think, I think we've gone, I don't see anything in the R1. Do we have any concerns about parking in the R1?
I'm good.
Okay, so then I guess we are finished with the parking, that end of it?
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
And then the next item is item nine.
Yes, we should still open the public hearing and then-
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, then I'll open the public hearing to see, let's see, on that item, if there was anything else that needed to be discussed regarding our existing parking code, our existing codes pertaining to parking. Okay, seeing none, I'll-
I don't know. I'd be in trouble tonight, because that still affects me, right? So I, I guess I wanted clarification on it, which, because, you know, I don't know a lot of this stuff, so. It looks like, what was it about the off-street parking? What was the new amendment you guys were making?
Well, what we just approved was clarifying the, well, we added a requirement to require garage door openers on all enclosed garages, okay? Hopefully to address some of the parking issues that we have in the city, if, on any new construction. If you're building an enclosed garage, they'll be required to-
Covered parking.
Also, we defined further that, you know, covered parking versus enclosed parking, completely enclosed.
And that's what I kinda wanted to know too.
Things like that.
I kinda wanted to know that too, because the clarification on that.
Yeah, the, the numbers, the, the, the requirement for the R1, excuse me, the R2 and R3 is, is, there's a minimum of one covered space or enclosed space for each unit that is built. That's the, and that's basically existing that we have right now. And then the other ones can all be open. We did clarify for condominiums that there to be enclosed spaces, completely, garages, basically. And on all of them, that they're to have, if they have a garage, they're to have a, a garage door opener, automatic opener.
Okay.
And that you're allowed to have, so I'm from memory now, if you have, if you have like a carport, if you have a covered space, you can, you can have a carport. You're allowed to put in a storage area, you know, at the end of the carport that can be logged. And that will count towards, we have a requirement for storage, you know, apart from the unit that's required on new construction, so that, that can count towards that, that storage requirement. That stuff in the garage or the carport can be considered as part of your requirement for storage.
Okay.
So we, we're, that's basically what we've, we've approved tonight, in a nutshell.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, and now we'll go to item nine. If we could have a staff report, this has to do with accessory dwelling units, yeah, nine A, accessory dwelling units.
Thank you, Chairman. The nine A was, is about accessory dwelling units. We're going through this again, because the state has given us a letter that explains a little bit more about how we should interpret the law they made. And so they, they made a bunch of red line changes, like Assistant City Attorney did tonight. And they have sent that to us, and I think I enclosed it in your packet, yeah. And so that's what they, they want us to change our code to fit this. So we need to have it on the agenda at some point in the future to discuss it, to change it, to fit what they said. So that's it, yeah.
All right, okay, and so any questions of staff regarding that report?
No.
So basically, we're just bringing, we're bringing everything into conformance with the, with the state law.
Correct.
And for just a brief-
Well, we're putting it on the agenda for a future meeting to discuss it.
We're just, we're just-
This is just approving it to go on the agenda.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
We enclosed all this, so you can just kinda see what it is, why we're doing it, so.
All right, so somebody like to make a motion that we'll put this on the next agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay, so we'll be discussing this at a future.
Right.
Okay.
Date to be determined.
Okay, on to item nine B.
Chair de Bolt, nine B, and, and rest of the group. Right, nine B is small wireless cellular installations, another resolution of intention. We are starting to get quite a few calls from wireless companies asking us if they can install these in our right-of-way, which is basically like a, a small wireless installation on the top of our telephone poles and light poles and stuff like that. And our code is not real clear on this. So what our code is used to seeing is, is large antennas, and this is, these are much smaller. And they're more frequent, and they're, yeah, there, there's gonna be as many of these as there are telephone poles in the future, probably. So it's for, each company has their own, and they rent them, the poles from Edison, which are, they're in our right-of-way, so we have to discuss what, and the way we feel about that. So that's what this was about.
All right, again, this is the item that we'll be discussing at a future meeting, so.
I'll make a motion to resolution of intention number sixteen, or eighteen dash sixteen.
I'll second, but can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Can, can you also bring us a picture when you come back with this?
Oh, there is a picture in-
Did I miss him?
Yeah, the last page, Kazwa. Oh, and there's one before.
It's like three or four different photos.
Okay, so. Okay, so we have a motion on that, and a second?
I'll second.
Looks like it's thick.
I know.
Okay, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, our next item on our agenda is, any items from the Development and Services Director?
Just a couple of items, Chairman, and members of the commission. Before you is an updated zoning map. Last time that zoning map was updated was nineteen eighty-nine. Working with consultants that is working with our general, oh, our zoning code update, they have prepared the update to the city's general, zoning code map. So we have those up in City Hall, and we provided every member of the commission with the most current zoning map. So that contains all the zone changes that have occurred since nineteen ninety-nine.
Can I add a caveat to that? The streets are not zoned on this map, because the program used called GIS to do this can't zone streets at this point, but when the zoning person, consultant does the final one, it, we will zone streets or not, whichever you guys decide at that point.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So any questions on that?
Nope.
And then the second item, just kinda putting our planner hat, planner hats on. Planning Commission meeting in December would fall the day after Christmas. So I'm asking the commission to look at your availability for December nineteenth, it's the week before. So we're probably gonna reschedule that meeting to the nineteenth of December. Just wanna give you a heads up. The meeting in November does work, because Thanksgiving is actually a week, well, it's, falls early in, in the calendar, in November. So the November Planning Commission meeting would fall the week after Thanksgiving this year. It's supposed to the night before, so, just, just a couple of dates for your, your upcoming calendars.
Okay, any-
Nineteenth's fine with me.
Yeah, any commissioner reports?
I have a question. The landscaping that's going on over at businesses that's kinda showing a lot of weeds, is there anything we can do about that?
Code enforcement, yes.
Can we talk with code enforcement about?
One of them, just a couple doors down?
Yep.
Yep, I know exactly what you're talking about, yeah.
Yeah, it's gotten now to the point of ridiculous, and I've sent them a letter.
Talked about that a couple days ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah.
At least they flowered the weeds pretty.
Oh, since Wendy brings that up, I noticed on the hotel property, you seen that Realtor who hung her big signs there? That's not allowed, is it?
No.
There's a female Realtor, two, on, on each corner, it's five by three or six by, it's big, it's got, her picture's gotta be this big on it.
Yeah, I haven't seen those, okay, Realtor signs.
And that's on the hotel property?
Uh huh, on both corners on the Boulevard.
All right, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Just, this is an update, Wahoos is coming along. They're pretty much, for the most part, on track, and just a comment, they're very pleased with staff and the work that you guys have done with them. Comments were made very, very positively about the work you guys have been doing with them, so, and they, and they love the city. So they're excited, I think they're excited as well, very much so. And Mama's opened today, I went there last night, food is really good, so.
And it's packed.
It's packed tonight when I drove here.
It was, it was really good.
And serve Los Angeles this weekend. For those who haven't volunteered for something, volunteer.
I did, I did, I'm signed up.
Okay, with that, any, anything else? Nothing? Okay, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.